Can I call in the name of the pledge of allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment? Oh, sorry, before the executive sentence? Here it is. Public comment?
Jeff Donkel, Palo Alto, Lisa Stevens is not here again. Are we ever going to request her to come to a meeting? And did we ever hear any updates on her potential fraud from the county?
That's the one that we're hearing, but I guess it's put Monday.
She's not ever going to be requested to come to a meeting? I mean, her name's on the agenda for five years now, and she hasn't been at one meeting. It's a shame. And then she gets a pay raise on top of it, after she robbed people. Uh, how about Gaffney? Any update on that? Is it being looked into? I mean, you guys open investigations, fraudulent investigations, pretty much bullshit investigations on other people that cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars, if not into hundreds of thousands of dollars. And there's someone stating that she was on FMLA, not showing up for work. Less than sixty hours in seven months? And we're just going to let that go? And then she claimed she's on FMLA? She wasn't. She's not legally allowed to. Why isn't that being investigated? Why don't we have a third party coming in on that?
Because she doesn't get it at all.
Okay, well, then why is she on record stating that?
She made a mistake saying, oh, she was.
Wait, 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 make a mistake. Make a mistake.
But Jeff, she's a legitimate official, she has sixteen twenty rights.
That's like me making a mistake saying I'm not up here for public comment.
Four years, somebody can run against her and people can decide.
Don't worry, there's, don't worry, there's opponents running against her because I think it needs to be looked into. She's here for less than sixty hours. I know she's a good buddy of yours, less than sixty hours from January first to August first, and we're just going to let that slide. She, it's absentee office holder, and you guys are just allowing it. There's avenues that you guys can go down to get her removed or investigated. You've done it with many other people that are employees here that were found to be no wrongdoing, but you're going to let her slide because you two are good friends with her. So we'll move on from that. I'll just keep bringing it up week after week until something's done. Uh, how about the distributions over ten million dollars that you guys are sitting on? Anything done with that yet? They get noted that everybody just looks around. It is a joke, I mean, it's funny. All these school districts have to raise taxes, municipalities have to raise taxes, and all you can do is sit there and laugh.
That is why we're moving.
But these people out here that are digging deep, hang on, let me finish. You let me finish? If you want to have a rebuttal, let me finish.
I'll give you your time.
Hang on a minute, let me finish my state. You're not letting me finish my statement. You're saying dictator, you're not, you're getting into his dictatorship. Okay, then let me finish and I'll let you talk.
I'm answering your question, I can talk.
Let me finish, I'm not done my question yet. I'm not done my question yet. Are you going to do what Boots did? This is my meeting. Then let me finish my statement. I didn't even finish my statement.
Go ahead.
These people are digging deep right now to pay their taxes. Many of them are losing their properties. It's record numbers on these tax sales and lists. Does somebody message you and you keep it up, Larry?
No, I'm just making sure it's not emergency with my dog.
What, what I'm saying is, these people are digging deep and can't afford things. These municipalities and taxing bodies have to raise taxes, and you guys are sitting on this money. Ten, over ten million dollars, that's what it was last year. Ten million dollars. So why can you sit there and laugh about that when people are struggling to pay their taxes? Now, go ahead.
Jeff, I'm not laughing about that. I'm laughing about the other week you were complaining that we went to ALLETE and were trying to move the office to.
This has nothing to do with ALLETE.
Yes, it does. They are going to handle distributions and get everything caught up that was fell behind.
How long is it?
That's why we're going to ALLETE to get it caught up.
How long is ALLETE in that office?
ALLETE had, they only handled the judiciary sales.
Okay.
Other than that, now they're going to have a contract for all functions of the office.
Any distributions weren't done in the last four years, five years, three years? ALLETE was in there.
I don't know how many years it is that they.
ALLETE was in there, so.
But they are going to be.
So when, when can these municipalities and taxing bodies expect these to be done?
Hopefully soon.
That's the best we can give.
Yes.
I'll ask again next week, hopefully you have a better date. My last point. I'm getting taken from everybody else.
All the league taxes that are collected, it used to be policy, it was sixty days always to return back to the municipalities. All the league taxes are sent to the municipalities within thirty days direct deposit. Everyone, the little counties and municipalities in Schoolville County are paid on thirty days for all the league taxes collected. It's a common turn around, give it back. I just wanted to put that for your information because not a lot of people know that. But these municipalities are getting anything that is delinquent and collected within thirty days. Some of them get a couple thousand dollars a month. So I want you to put that part at rest. Anything that we do not hold any kind of delinquent taxes that are collected because they turn around and bring it back.
What about the taxing bodies, the municipal, the municipal water and sewer garden?
Not sewer and garbage, I don't collect that, we don't.
Okay.
Okay. Taxes that are collected and paid to the county are turned around in thirty days direct deposit. I produce on a Tuesday, they have a Wednesday, along with an electronic report that's sent out to them immediately, so.
And none of the overages go out? The overbids?
I'm not charging that part of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My last point, and I'll finish up because I'm over my time on the ground. Back in June, uh, when I purchased a county vehicle, I reported to you guys that there was a clip in there with hollow point bullets, and I was going to be looked into. It was a drug task force clip, it's written clearly on there with hollow point bullets. It could have fell into the wrong hands, but they're still in my safe at my house. So I'd like to know how that investigation went and where we stand with that because I have a clip. I mean, what kind of inventory is done here? And why can somebody just off the street end up with a clip with hollow point bullets that say drug task force Schoolville County on it? So I'd like an update on that since today marks a hundred days since I reported it to you guys. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
George Stankovich, Palo Alto, once again up here for the senior citizens and veterans. Thank you for bringing it up about senior citizens losing their homes, veterans are too. One thing I like to know is, you know, when you pay your taxes early, they give you a two percent break. But if you're late, it's six percent. Some of these people can't afford, uh, what the taxes are, and they can't get enough money to pay them. So especially veterans and senior citizens, if anything, they should get at least a ten percent break for paying early. Then you wouldn't be running into this trouble all the time. I think that it's got to learn that people are living day to day. Day to day, not, not like some people have money in the bank and they don't have to live day to day. I mean, they have to, they have to figure out, do I pay for my medication? Do I pay the doctor bill? Do I get food for my children? I mean, this is ridiculous. Or just for, uh, senior citizens and veterans. I mean, I, I don't know what's going on. Also worried about is, like I said, once again, Democrats blame the Republicans, Republicans blame the Democrats. What are they doing for the people? That's what I like to know. What are they doing for the people? I don't want to hear all this other garbage. Just like a person called WNAP, I know that everybody laughs at those things, but it's true. I even timed one. There were seventeen political commercials within a half hour. Seventeen commercials. Did you see how much money? And this was a week or two ago. Both parties, both parties just in Pennsylvania paid over three hundred and some million dollars each. Three hundred and sixty or something like that. Why don't we grab that money and pay the school districts in our, in our state? That's what I'm saying. And then you won't have to raise the taxes. You won't have that, all this nonsense. People won't lose their home. They'll be able to fix their homes. That's what you're complaining about too. Oh, look at that blight, blight, blight. Well, they can't afford to fix them. And when you do something, they want to raise your taxes. This is ridiculous. I don't know what the heck has to happen in here. I, I, I'm tired. I'm telling Hughes guys, and I know you have to go to state, I know you have to go to congressman and senate, I know all this stuff. Don't tell me about that, I know all this stuff. And I'll tell you one thing. The senator and congressman that are here in Potsill, they hear my voice each and every day when I'm, or week that I'm on this microphone, and they hate my guts. I'll, I'll actually say they hate my guts. Because when they see me, this is what they, their smiles on their face when they see me walking toward them. Hope he doesn't see me, hope he doesn't hear about, want to say anything to me. Okay? I'm just saying, something has to be done for the people, the poor people of the country. I'm sick of the rich people.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. Melinda Diver, North Manhattan Township. On August ninth of two thousand and twenty-four, I submitted an email to the Open Records Officer, Lloyce Lebo. I had four right to know requests. Most of those requests, three of the four, had to do with Susquehanna Accounting and Consulting Solutions Incorporated. I was asking for their contract or contracts expired or active contracts, invoices, fees, bills, et cetera. I was also asking for any email or electronic communications that had gone back and forth between Susquehanna and any county officials, be it Solicitor's Office, Commissioners, you know, the Finance Office, County Administrator, et cetera. Okay. At the end of the five business days, I received an emailed response from Lloyce Lebo, the off, the Open Records Officer, asking for a thirty day extension. So if you look up section nine oh two B two of the Right to Know Law, if the date that a response is expected to be provided is in excess of thirty days, the request for access shall be deemed denied unless the requister, which would have been me, has agreed in writing to an extension. When I went through and counted through the thirty calendar days, that actually ended on a Sunday. Does the courthouse open on Sunday? I don't think so. So that would have been Sunday, September fifteenth. I emailed Lloyce back and also copied the county Solicitor's Office stating, no, we need to stay within the thirty day calendar according to the Right to Know Law. They have, the agency, which would be the county in this case, has thirty days or less to respond to the requister. I responded, no, we need to stay within that thirty calendar days. As such, I am expecting that my right to know requests will be honored on or before Friday, September thirteenth. Do you think I heard back from the county on September thirteenth? No, I did not. I also emailed you, Commissioner Pedora, as chairman of the Commissioners, asking for you to please touch base with Lloyce Lebo to find out the status of my right to know request. I also sent an email to Lloyce Lebo and again copied the county Solicitor's Office on September fifth, asking for an update regarding my right to know request. Do you think I got a response from anyone? No, I did not. I, I don't know what it takes to get people to respond to the constituents. Now, I just received, as of Monday, I received a notice from Lloyce stating that if I want my right to know request, I'm going to need to pay a hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents for paper copies when I know for a fact that my four right to know requests were emailed to the county Solicitor's Office and Lloyce Lebo as the Open Records Officer. Houston, you think we got a problem? Yeah, we got a problem. I asked for my records, I asked specifically, you want to see them? You want to see the copies? I asked for my records to be given to me electronically. I specifically stated, no paper copies. And that's how my records were provided to Lloyce Lebo. Why am I being expected to pay over a hundred and eighty-three dollars for paper copies when my records were not provided to her in that manner? I'm telling you right now, county commissioners, and in the future, Gary and Boots, I will also make sure that you are copied on those emails, or I will send them to all three commissioners. Because right now it seems that we have a problem getting our commissioners to respond, be responsive to their constituents.
Okay, so, Linda, I checked on it Monday, and they told me it was ready for you Monday. And also you messaged me on my private Facebook page on Messenger about your right to know request. Okay? So if you want to message me.
You don't have a county cellphone. I would have, I would have contacted you on your county cellphone, but you don't have one.
And the emails, I, Paul.
I also have.
Because we, we talked about this. So stop.
Yeah, the, the five business days obligates the Open Records Officer to respond to you.
Got it.
She responded to you not requesting an extension. She responded to you indicating she was taking an extension under a different section of the Act. It's the subsection right before the one you mentioned. I don't remember, I think it was there were three different bases on which she was taking a thirty days.
Exactly, but Solicitor.
So she informed you that she was taking a thirty calendar day extension.
It was thirty-one, it was thirty-one days.
It, no, it ended.
It was thirty-one, Paul?
It ended on a Sunday, therefore we have until the next.
No, you do not. It is thirty calendar days, on or before.
So I looked into it, and that's what our Solicitor is telling me.
He is incorrect. He is incorrect, and I can't wait to hear what the state has to say.
Can I ask you though, Harry? Last meeting, when you yell, people even here heard you in the Hoffman Room yelling at the last Commissioners meeting. We're right here.
Paint it, paint it however you want, Larry, that's fine.
We can hear you.
Paint it.
I looked into your thing, and they told me that they met the criteria.
No, they did not. No, they did not.
The Congress is not being treated any differently than anybody else.
So everybody else is being stomped upon.
I checked into it, like, because I saw your email, and I asked, and our Solicitor is.
Why don't you get back to me, Larry?
Because I was going to wait to tell you today.
Oh!
If, if the Open Records Officer receives the documents in paper form.
That's not how she receives them.
Let him finish his statement.
Go ahead.
If she receives them in paper form, then they come to you in paper form. And if they exceed, I think it's twenty-five dollars in copying cost, actually it's any copy, any copying cost, you have to pay those. So on Monday, you receive the standard notice that she sends out indicating the number of records and the cost of the records. When you produce the payment for the records, you'll have them.
The records, excuse me, Solicitor Paul Dotty, those records were given to Lloyce Lebo in electronic format.
How do you know that?
Because we look into things, Paul.
How do you know that, seriously?
What? You, you're going to make other departments take, take the heat for what you're doing?
I'm informed they got the records in paper form, so.
Oh, so Lloyce told you that? That she received them in paper form? Lloyce told you that? That is incorrect.
So you have, you have a thirty day appeal, right? The records are there.
Get ready.
Let's get back to the paper issue.
You can appeal to the Office of Open Records. Follow your appeal. If you're, if you're not satisfied, follow your appeal. We feel the proper procedures followed.
You're incorrect. Pull, pull the statute up and take a look at it.
I think you need to pull the statute up and look.
I got it.
And Melinda.
I got it.
Melinda.
Thirty calendar days or less, you have to respond.
Listen, I appeal to the Open Records thing in state, and if they find we're in violation, then we'll deal with it.
But I will be by today because I did. If you want a copy, I can give you a copy, Larry. I did check off visual inspection, so I will be going by today for a visual inspection.
They're about stacked up in, I think it is, roughly.
Oh, so you, you've seen them.
Yeah, that's Monday, like I told you, I looked into it on Monday.
And I would have appreciated, Larry, if you had gotten back to me on Monday instead of, oh, I just thought I'd wait until today. Oh, got it.
Because I went and checked with them, and that's what they said. Any other public comment? No? Okay, I'd like to move on to the meeting. We have a proclamation for Constitutional Week. Uh, then we want to present to the daughters of the American Revolution. Sherry Lee and Marina? Is that Marina Walsh? Let's see, they're exercising constitutional rights here today. So we have a proclamation, whereas December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, or it's the two hundred and thirty-seven, seventh anniversary of drafting the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent, magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to patriotic celebration, which we commemorate, commemorate with the occasion. And whereas the public law in nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuance of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating seven, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four as Constitutional Week. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Board of the Schoolville County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four as Constitutional Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in nineteen, so seventeen eighty-seven, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost, lost rights may never be regained. And, you know, I appreciate this, the Constitution was given to us by our founding father. It's a document that we all need to study and learn, and it protects our freedoms and it's what our country is based on. So, congratulations for this brought connection.
Just thank, thank you for everything that you do, and I know you've been here every year of promoting this, and not, not just here, but always. And it's a great organization that you can continue the tradition of what our founding fathers set forth, and you carry the torch forward to the younger generation to make sure that it continues. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's very befitting, we're coming up on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country. The grand experiment, where our forefather lived under kings and queens and royalty. And this is just going to be a, a lot of time, a lot of folks had points that it would, it would last. And it's a testament to the fact that we've done almost two hundred and fifty years. Once again, thank you for your involvement, keeping this, this family alive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then before we move on with the meeting, I just want to mark the passing of Lloyd Hampton. He was a former, a former county attorney and one of our role officers attorneys. He passed away Sunday, Sunday night. And so just have a little silence for him for a minute. Thank you. To the meeting, mental health.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're requesting approval of the appendix H payment schedule between the county of Schoolville and service access and management for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of six million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which constitutes the distribution of the MHID and early intervention service dollars.
Grand writers? Okay, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today I'm requesting approval of a modification to the two thousand and twenty-three CBBG program, moving fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Wayne Township Home Rehab line item to the Parks line item. Also approval to advertise for demolition projects in the boroughs of Coldell, Shenadoa, and Girardville. Bits will be due in the Controller's Office on Monday, October twenty-first at four P M. The bid opening will take place Wednesday, October twenty-third at nine A M. And tentative award date is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Prison?
Good morning. David Wopinski, on behalf of the prison, approval of a contract with McClure Company, Wilkes-Barre, PA, to provide installation of sensors in the refrigerator and freezer at the prison to allow monitoring of temperatures of both for twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Term is September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, public. Uh, on behalf of the Recorder Deeds Office, Ferrar Clemente, requesting approval of an agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics. They're our software company, for the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents. They're going to be doing a re-indexing, getting us back from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen sixteen. It's a pretty big jump, uh, to get our records redigitized, cleaned up, and actually indexed. It'll start, hopefully, September twenty-fifth, and in one year. That's all.
Much easier.
Good morning, Commissioners. Albert Drykowski, representing the Voter Registration and Election Bureau. Today we're asking for approval for a request of a five dollar increase to the Computation Board daily rate from seventy dollars to seventy-five dollars per day. We're also asking for approval to hire fourteen election rovers that start immediately for the purpose of office preparation, and L and A, which is logistics and accuracy testing for the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four general election, at a rate of twelve dollars per hour. Rovers are to be paid at a rate of sixty-seven cents per mile traveled on election day to assigned polling sites, or nor where needed. They are Mr. Michael Anasconich, Ron Pullman, Carol Cooney, Sisda. They are Mr. Michael Anisconich, Ron Pullman, Carol Cooney Sizdek, Paula Warmkessel, John Handler, John Gears, Tim Wood, Gary Kiefer, Cindy Drasnovich, Daniel Walker, Jim Gustus, and Julie Zangary. We also ask for the approval to hire four additional subcontractors as needed. There are Mr. Delmar Phillips, Carol Cooney Sizdek, Marianne Janchulis, and Paula Warmkessel. We request to approve also to hire eleven drivers to deliver Election Day supplies to the, to the judge of elections and the equipment in preparation of the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four general election. There are Mr. Stephen Davis at three hundred and sixty dollars, Mr. William Klinger, three hundred and ten, James Zerby, three hundred and fifty dollars, Rory Riley at three hundred and sixty dollars, Jay Tobias, three hundred and twenty dollars, Linda Handler, three hundred and twenty dollars, Delmar Phillips, three hundred and sixty dollars, Darren Phillips, three hundred and ten dollars, Gary Kiefer, three hundred and forty dollars, Vivian Rupert, three hundred dollars, and Keith Pogash, three hundred and twenty dollars. The Election Bureau also requests approval to hire eight additional Election Day machine delivery drivers in preparation of November fifth, two thousand twenty-four general election, at a rate of fourteen dollars per hour. And we'll hire these eight subcontractors as needed. There again are Mr. Del, Delmar Phillips, Jeff Kovach, Darren Phillips, Andrew Grikowski, Keith Pogash, John Gears, Gary Goodman, and Steve McCarthy. There was a misspelling there from Mr. Ford, it's actually Steve McCarthy. Request approval to hire four Resolution Board members for Election Day and night at the S T S Building for the general election on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. There are Renee Buchanan for a hundred dollars, Edward Barkett a hundred dollars, Michael Begota one hundred dollars, and Bob Bylone one hundred dollars. And then we ask for approval to hire up to eight individuals for the Computation Board for the rate of seventy-five dollars per day, beginning November eighth at nine A M. And the Election Bureau to begin at the two percent computation, canvassing up the returns from the general elections dated November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Officer, your services.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the offices in your services, approval of an addendum to extend the contract another fiscal year of twenty-four, twenty-five, with abilities in motion of ready, P A, for fiscal agent services. The contract cap will be seventy-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is the same as prior fiscal year. Uh, approval of an addendum to extend the contract until January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, with Claire Lawrence of Kamboa, P A, for fiscal management services and training. The contract cap will remain the same. Uh, approval of an addendum to extend the contract for the period of October first, two thousand twenty-four, to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, with Service Access Management of Pottsville for fiscal management services in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The monthly rate is the same as the current contract. Uh, approval of a contract with Regional Cooperative LLC, which is Flair County Area Agency on Aging of Altoona, P A, for assistance with the protective services, uh, line intake, uh, which will be approximately eight hundred and twenty-two dollars a month, effective as of September first, two thousand twenty-four. And protective service investigative staff, which is twenty-eight fifty-one an hour, and the P S supervision is forty-four dollars and seven cents an hour, effective October forty, uh, October first, two thousand twenty-four. The agency will be billed on actual units. Uh, the contract cap will be a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Approval of an addendum to extend the contract another three fiscal years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, with Precious Dodd of Parlaw, P A, for registered dietitian services. Uh, the rate per hour will remain the same as prior fiscal year, the contract cap for each fiscal year is twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Carl Rumble, on behalf of Children Youth. We have one addendum to present today, four agreements with the fiscal year term period, uh, and an additional agreement to present today. First, we're requesting approval of an agree, of an addendum to the agreement with Lifespan Family Services of P A out of Punxsutawney, Pennsylvania, dated November ninth, two thousand twenty-three. This addendum would extend its term period to include fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five at current rates, and it adjusts terms, uh, adjusting the indemnification provisions and adding training requirements with a new end date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Each of the following four agreements have a term period of July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, twenty-five. First is request, uh, for approval of an agreement with Wesley Family Services, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for foster care services. Uh, their Class B B level of care for children birth through age eleven is at a per diem rate of ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. Class C C service for children ages twelve through twenty-one is at a per diem rate of ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Class D D program for children birth through age twenty-one requiring additional supports would be at a per diem rate of one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents. We have requests for approval of an agreement with U P M C and their Child Advocacy Center of Central P A, based in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for forensic interviews at a per-unit fee of five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Child medical consults and exams at a per-unit fee of two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and physician case consult reviews are at a rate of one hundred and thirty-eight dollars per hour. Uh, next we have approval of an agreement with Summit Academy, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for community-based residential services, with per diem rates as follows. Their, uh, general residential program is at two hundred and eighty-one dollars, three cents, drug and alcohol program is at three hundred and sixty-one dollars, their shelter programming is at three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Their specialized settings program is at four hundred and fifteen dollars, the intensive specialized settings program will be at seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents. And finally, uh, they are now offering an enhanced support program, and that per diem rate is one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Closely associated organization, but providing programming for girls, uh, under the same umbrella organization, uh, the Academy Schools. Our agreement with, uh, proposed agreement with Community Specialists Corporation out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Uh, they also offer community-based residential services, and their per diem rates are as follows. New Outlook Academy Residential Program is at three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-three cents, the drug and alcohol programming is at three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-four cents, shelter program is at four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the specialized settings program is at four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy cents. Finally, their enhanced support program, uh, is at one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, our last agreement to propose is approval of an agreement with Justin Reed, doing business at Scook News Media LLC, out of Ashland, Pennsylvania. This is a continuation of the Foster Parent Recruitment, uh, Campaign and Advertising Services with a capped annual amount of nine hundred dollars even, and this would be for the term September first, two thousand twenty-four to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Good morning, Governor.
Good morning. Connor Matts, M I S. Uh, requesting approval to purchase upgraded voice routers from Shadow Technologies for nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, including the cost of three years of support. The voice routers, routers were then being added to Department of State's phone system as requested by Domestic Relations. That cost will be billed after, as time, uh, time of materials. Uh, also requesting approval to purchase an upgraded circuit from Xfinity. This one through increasing our network from five hundred megabytes to one gigabyte per second. Included will be an S D WAN for failover to a Verizon two hundred megabyte per second circuit. The price per month will increase from one thousand, three hundred and, uh, forty-six dollars to two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars a month. Uh, there's a one-time installation fee of a hundred dollars.
On Monday, we had a bid opening for repairs to County Bridge sixty-four, and the results are posted outside. We had seven bidders, Desco Design and Construction, Dolly Construction, Fabport, J V I, Kevin Raker, Lehigh Asphalt, Paving and Construction, and Maniki. And Maniki Incorporated out of DuPont was the lowest bid at forty-eight thousand dollars. We have already had Vanish take a look at that, and their bid is good. Um, so next week we'll be seeking approval, and they are looking to start at the beginning of October. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer's Office.
Morning, Commissioners. Through the Solicitor's Office, uh, we're seeking approval to adopt an ordinance authorizing the county to accept a proposal of Elite Revenue Solutions LLC to serve as agent for the Scoopel County Tax Claim Bureau. Uh, if approved, there would be a formal agreement, if we come back before the County Commissioners specifying the specific terms and conditions. Uh, that agreement would be consistent with the proposal. Uh, the second request, uh, is to adopt an ordinance authorizing the county to establish a Scoopel County Demolition and Rehabilitation Fund under Act forty-eight of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Act twenty, Act forty-eight of two thousand twenty-four was adopted in July and would permit counties to collect a fee in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars from each and every purchaser of real property from a tax sale or a mortgage foreclosure sale, uh, in addition to the purchase price of the property and all other associated fees and costs. The act was adopted in July, but in order for the act to be applicable for the calendar year two thousand twenty-five, which is the stated effective date, January one of, uh, two thousand twenty-five, this would have to be adopted at next week's meeting because there's a ninety-day requirement prior to the effective date of the act. So, um, if we don't, if it's not approved next week, uh, and is approved at a later date, it would not apply until two thousand twenty-six.
And that money, the fee, that goes directly for demolition?
That's correct, and rehabilitation, but primarily demolition, yes.
Question on the, uh, the, with Elite.
Yes.
What's the timeframe of, uh, the switch over?
Don't, don't know for, no, don't know for certain yet. Regardless of that, they, there will be a transition period, particularly with respect to, um, I T issues and computer issues, so, um, we're, we're targeting absolutely this year, uh, the exact date, Gary, I don't, I don't...
Okay, I just wanted to know that.
Yep.
A rough, a rough time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Well, I did quite wish to copy, we, we're trying to charge it by, by the end of the year.
Yes, it'll definitely happen by the end of the year.
January first, I'll be, it'll be charged at the office.
I, I think maybe prior to that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Treasurer's Report for August two thousand twenty-four has an account balance ending with one hundred and ten million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
County Minister.
Purpose requested to authorize the County Treasurer to open a separate bank account with M and T Bank for the purpose of depositing and distributing funds in connection with the Electoral Integrity Grant. Uh, this is a recommendation from D C D, and I'm actually...
Do you have a motion to that there?
Motion to, uh, authorize the bank accounts.
Is that okay? Questions?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Finance Officer, Paul?
Commissioners, good morning. Uh, this morning I have several items I'd like to present. Uh, first, in connection with budget adjustments, I'd like to present eight budget adjustments. Uh, the eight budget adjustments have been posted outside of the board. Commissioners, I also have two supplemental budget appropriation resolutions I'd like to present. The first one is Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, I'm presenting this on behalf of Domestic Relations Office. Uh, it involves their Domestic Relations Incentives Fund. Commissioners, uh, back on May eighth of this year, I presented a similar resolution, and the purpose is very similar. Uh, the agency is rece, uh, is not receiving their federal funds in a timely manner, and as a result, they need to supplement their cash flow so that they can pay their bills timely. Uh, so they would like to use their Incentives Fund, which does not involve any general fund money. So, uh, what we're doing is we're adjusting the appropriate revenue and expenditure line items so that they can continue to, uh, pay some of the expenses that are eligible for the Incentives Fund so that they can pay the bills timely. Uh, also as an F Y I, uh, year to date, in connection with their federal money, they've only received thirty-eight percent of what they're entitled to, and this just is not unique to Scoopel County, it's pretty much a statewide problem.
And this isn't just the first time that we've heard this either.
Correct, yes, that is correct, I mentioned back on May the eighth, uh, a similar, uh, request was made. Okay? Commissioners, I also have a supplemental budget appropriation Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-two. I'd like to present this on behalf of the Human Services Department for ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Commissioners, uh, the human ser, Human Services Building Fund is eligible to reimburse the general fund for certain expenses, specifically what we call our indirect cost expenses. Uh, there was money budgeted to be transferred over to reimburse the general fund. This is in addition to, when the actual calculations and billings, uh, were, were made, uh, the number actually came in higher than what was actually budgeted. So this is an additional ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars that's coming back to the general fund. It's not costing the general fund money, it's actually coming back to the general fund.
Do I have a motion to approve supplemental budget Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one?
Motion to approve the budget request for, uh, vestalations.
Second. And question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. And a motion to approve supplemental budget Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, request for Human Services Department.
Second. And question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Commissioner Herr, hit the resource.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, in the prison, we have the transfer of Mark Hardner to Correction Officer Full Time. He's coming from Correction Officer Part-Time, rate is twenty-three point zero seven three zero, effective date is nine thirty twenty-four, the wages are per the union contract. And additionally, we have three informational items, and the District Attorney's Office, the appointment of Dalton Bates, unpaid intern, effective nine three twenty-four. And the Public Defender's Office, the promotion of Angela Walters to Fiscal Administrative Assistant, effective nine twenty-three twenty-four, uh, coming from the Office Manager position. And a juvenile probation, the transfer of Samantha Petridge to Secretary Two, coming from Clerk Three, and that is effective nine thirty twenty-four. All appointments are pending drug tests and physical where appropriate. All actions involving salary or propositions being created are pending Salary Board approval.
Thank you, any new business? Motion for Derek.
Motion for Derek.
Salary Board, permitting to enact the sessions?
They're in that.
Public comment, Salary Board?
Dr. Uncle Palo Alto, real quick, uh, I see you're gonna vote on an ordinance next week for Elite, and then to enact it and get them in here by the end of the year. Is there any notice that the taxpayers are gonna be able to review a fee schedule, the ordinance, how this is gonna happen, or is it just gonna be pushed right through, no transparency? How, how they're gonna, it was discussed how they're getting the fees that are normally paid. But why isn't any of that being made public in the... Is that gonna be advertised though prior, that the public can see this before you vote on?
The resolution wasn't...
Right, and I'm saying this ordinance that yous are gonna adopt, is that gonna be for public inspection before?
Yeah.
And...
I think it was... It was that...
I didn't, okay, I didn't see this.
It was today.
Okay, I'll look for it, okay, yeah, okay, thanks. And I wish Paul was still here, just to follow up on that issue. Uh, I had the same thing happen to me with the right-to-know request, which I'm sure they're just gunning for certain people. I know two other people that put right-to-no's in, all of us were, they were electronically forwarded to the office, and then were printed out and forced to pay for them. Some ten dollars, two dollars, twenty-eight dollars, a hundred and eighty-three dollars, it's a hundred percent illegal. So now I guess what we gotta do is, and he stated, how did Melinda know, because we go right to the source and ask them, did you copy them or did you email them, everybody emailed? So I guess we gotta do a right-to-know on a right-to-know. It just seems like now we have to do a right-to-know on the emails that we requested on a right-to-know. So I know there's a website, F O, F O I A buddy dot com, that they do all this right-to-know, so I guess we're all gonna have to go through there and just submit them that way so that there's a paper trail. But it's a shame that people are privy to that information, and now they're forced to pay a hundred and eighty-three dollars, I think that's...
I've done right-to-know requests in the past, they were denied.
Oh, I've had plenty of those, but my thing is, if it's sent electronically, they should be forwarded electronically.
The one year I wanted the whole budget, and I paid for the entire budget.
Yeah, I got you.
They have talk on Saturday, worth?
Uh, Melinda Dibbert, North Mannheim Township.
Uh, Melinda Diver, North Mannheim Township. Uh, I'd like to know who oversees and directs the county's open records officer, Lois Lebo.
Solicitor's office.
So it would be, I'm assuming, the county solicitor who directs and oversees and otherwise directs the activities of the open records officer?
I don't believe so, but, well, they're involved, but yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping Lois doesn't just like take it of her own accord to, uh, how she functions in that office.
I know Shelby had to review the years. I don't just have to show it. Sometimes I task it to the day or somebody else, but I don't Shelby.
Yeah, we're, we're hearing actually that they sometimes shop them around to two or three different solicitors for everybody to look over the information. And how redundant and wasteful is that and time-consuming on the part of the county solicitors? Uh, when you have two or three county solicitors looking over one right-to-know request?
I don't know what happened. I'm just.
I'm just taking it straight from an email, okay?
Okay.
Okay. And, um, sh- shall I reread that section? Since the county solicitor seems to think that I need to get up to speed on one oh one P A code, chapter seven oh one, section nine oh two, B two, right-to-know law of Pennsylvania. If the date that a response is expected to be provided is in excess of thirty days, and that's thirty calendar days, the request for access shall be deemed denied unless the requister, me, has agreed in writing to an extension. I did not agree to an extension. The agency, in this case, the county, has thirty days or less to get back to the requister with their information. Thirty days or less, as I stated. I was not informed until day thirty-one. That exceeds the thirty calendar days. If it exceeds thirty calendar days, it's deemed that my requests are denied by the county. I would please suggest that even the county solicitor, the assistant county solicitors, and even the commissioners get up to speed, because I guarantee ya, none of us who take the time and energy to show up here for public comment, we do not take this lightly. And we don't stand up here and spiel off a bunch of nonsense. We look into it and make sure that what we're saying is accurate and is correct. And also, just to correct the county solicitor, I don't have thirty days to appeal the county's decision. It's fifteen business days. So, what, hey, time that just perfectly did not date. So it's fifteen business days to appeal. So I don't think I'm the one that needs to get up to speed on the right-to-know law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Uh, here with the resource's office.
Yes, commissioners, we are in, uh, limiting the position in the public defender's office of office manager, effective nine twenty-three twenty-four, and creating, uh, the position in the same office of fiscal administrative assistant, uh, same effective date, nine twenty-three twenty-four. And then, uh, the last item in the public defender's office, setting the salary to Angela Walters as the fiscal administrative assistant, and the rate is nineteen point nine three zero zero, effective nine twenty-three twenty-four. That is all.
This is a, I have to do a salary board, but I'm just surprised nobody brought up an N S P at an notice of violation by D D P. I'm amazed nobody brought that up, but. Got motion to adjourn.
Larry, it really does make the.